This time we'll go ahead and call the, uh, meeting of the Ascension zoning commission to order. Let the record show that, uh, Mr. Julio Dumas is absent. This time we'll go ahead and open up the floor for the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on any item is not up for public hearing on the agenda. They do so at this time. Come in, sign up, and you'll have your three minutes. No one wishing to speak for the public comment period. Item four, acceptance of the minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand and six special joint zoning and planning meeting.
Uh, motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Steve Barrow. Second by Mr. Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, acceptance of the minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand and six meetings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve Barrow. Seconded by Mike Bardwell to approve. Any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six, A zoning review ID fifteen forty-five point zero six, Grover McCoury Estates or Legend Homes LLC. Mr. Ferris, you're representing this property.
Yes, sir. Greg Ferris, Ferris Engineering, representing Legend Homes. We're asking for rezoning of a portion of the McCoury Estate. This is on the corner of Highway forty-two and Highway nine twenty-nine. The property is eighteen point eight-six acres. Currently, the front eight acres along Highway forty-two is zoned CC or commercial. And we're asking for the remaining ten point seven acres, uh, to be rezoned from RM to CC. That represents about, about forty percent of the site already zoned CC. Across the corner, of course, is the Bon Luce Shopping Center. Across nine twenty-nine are some higher density residential. What we're, the initial plan right now is to combine a little, some light retail along the hard corner of nine twenty-nine and forty-two, and the remainder of the property being residential. Somewhat, a little bit smaller than the RM zoning allows, which is the reason we're asking for the CC zoning, the crossroads commercial. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is this kind, is this condominiums or townhomes or just...
It'll be detached, single-family houses.
Single-family?
Yes, sir. They won't be attached. Uh, what, he's looking, I can show you a very preliminary sketch. It's, but it, we're looking in the neighborhood of forty-foot lots, forty to forty-five foot lots, which is actually, um, just looking at the assessor's map. That's probably comparable to what's, there's about ten lots across the street from us. They appear to be very narrow lots. Um, then in the neighborhood of forty-foot lots, forty to fifty-foot lots. And of course, retail on the corner.
Just on the corner of running forty-two or coming down, down that nine thirty-one as well?
Mostly down nine twenty-nine. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get the traffic off of forty-two, um, and, and of course, face the retail towards nine twenty-nine. And the entrance, the main entry would be off of nine twenty-nine for the retail and for the residential.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I just want to clarify this for myself. You said for the, the retail, the entrance would be on nine twenty-nine.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not saying that there would not be one on forty-two, but we're gonna focus the front of the, the facade of the buildings towards nine twenty-nine.
Just, this is a zoning issue, and the matter is whether you zone it or rezone it. You can't place any contingencies on it, and there's no such, because there's no conditional zoning. So although Mr. Ferris is an honorable man, the cell could turn around and sell it tomorrow, and it can do whatever they want with it. I just want to make sure that, I know some of y'all are new on this, and that there's no such thing as conditional zoning.
There are no other comments or questions, then we'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up, sign in, speak on this property? Do so now.
My mother owns the property next door to it, and what I want to know is how would the water drain on that piece of property for it to be a subdivision?
That's really not an issue that we're gonna be discussing here tonight.
Well, if you rezone it for the building, houses...
But that's just what the attorney was explaining. We're not here to discuss the subdivision aspect of it. That's just what their intended use is. We're here to discuss the calling issues.
Well, that's what's happening to the whole parish. I've lived out there all my life. Y'all let the cashiers put in a big subdivision. And, thank you.
My name is Karen Bray, and I've lived across from that land, uh, for about twenty-four years. And I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the type of development that could be put on that property if it's rezoned, and how it might affect my, my property value, and then our, just our way of life out there. The property, as you know, is bordered by nine twenty-nine and forty-two. Highway nine twenty-nine is, um, a substandard road that has a tremendous amount of traffic. I, when I sit in my chair, it's like, I can't even hear the TV unless I put it up loud. I don't think that the infrastructure is there for a retail outlet to come out on Highway nine twenty-nine. Uh, it's really almost ridiculous, and I'm not quite sure how that would work with the, um, subdivision, uh, you know, behind me. And also, there's gonna be two new schools out there that's scheduled to be built in about two, uh, in a few years. And I don't see how, if you add that traffic with, uh, traffic going to a retail outlet in a big subdivision, I don't know how that would work. And y'all just really need to think about that. And like, uh, the gentleman just said about the drainage, if you fill all that up with concrete and everything, I don't know how it's gonna affect the other sub, our subdivision and the other subdivisions. I mean, right now, um, a lot of the people in, uh, Quail Creek can't get into their subdivision when it rains, and Martin Subdivision also has a flooding problem. So I think that you really do need to consider what they plan to do with the property before you rezone it, because it has a big impact on the area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Ed White. Uh, I'm a resident of Rhonda Place Subdivision. And, uh, being a realtor, the first thing that comes to mind are, of course, the, uh, the type of lifestyle you lead. And I don't think anybody would move into that subdivision, um, if the permitted uses or any of the permitted uses that I see on this page, including bars and restaurants. I don't care what a man says when he stands up here and tells you, "We're only gonna build housing there," uh, because what I see is a permitted use of virtually anything you want to do on that particular piece of property. Uh, the second point I'd like to make is that, um, I don't know how many people are actually here from the subdivision in that area. I think the reason you don't have a better showing is that there was one sign announcing, um, this, uh, on the agenda today, on forty-two, whereas most of the people affected by this particular proposed, uh, conversion is on nine twenty-nine, which is where the sign should have been, because that's where the property faces on nine twenty-nine. Um, I would think that if you gave it, um, a little bit more thought, you probably would turn this down.
Thank you, sir. That's it? All right, that's it for the public comment period. Mr. Ferris?
Yes, sir.
Comments or questions by the commission, Mr. Ferris, at this time?
If you'd like me to rebut, I mean, there's not a whole lot to rebut, um...
Well, I, you can.
Like I said, there's not a whole lot. I'll answer any questions you have.
Commissioners have no other questions? Or any questions for that matter? What's the wish of the commission?
I'm gonna just go on the record stating that this is, the way it's zoned right now is consistent with the other, you know, the other corner there, um, where Bon Luce Groceries is. And, you know, it, it does go back further on that side for the zoning than, than that shopping center. But I don't see where we would be consistent, you know, extending Crossroads Commercial out to that, to that level in this area. I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this rezoning.
Have a motion to deny by Mike Bardwell?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six B, zoning review ID fifteen forty-six point zero six, lot three C for Todd Husers.
Close enough. Good evening. Uh, my name's Todd Husers. Um, I'm requesting, night, that we, uh, that you guys rezone, uh, my lot from medium residential to Crossroads Commercial. I purchased this property about six years ago. Uh, there's a, there's a, about a sixty-year-old home on that property, uh, and I renovated it to run my insurance agency, and we've grown to a, a point where I need to expand. And I'd like to build a new building behind that old residence, uh, and move the, uh, the, the, the older building off. So my, my request is simple, to, to move it from the medium residential to the Crossroads Commercial. The development across the street, um, we have a, a new dentist office and the, the, uh, Jump and Jive, and then next door to me is a school, and across the street from, or on the other side of them is the, uh, the new physical therapy complex. I think it would, it would go well with that area, and, uh, it would, uh, assist me in, uh, in my business.
Comments or questions from the commission?
What's immediately adjoining your property?
On, uh, on the north side, it's, uh, Robert Scheck Snyder. It's a cow pasture. Uh, on the rear of the property, and actually on the, the east side, and on the south side is school board property, Oak Grove Primary. And, across the street is the, the Jump and Jive, and the, it's a new dentist office, and I think the...
You're the State Farm building?
Yeah. I'm the State Farm building.
Is the property actually split in half zoning-wise according to the diagram as we're talking?
No, it's, the small lot is the, is the property that we are...
It's a half an acre.
Oh, hello, sorry.
You can give me more if you'd like to give me more.
Any other comments or questions? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item? Come up and sign in. We'll have y'all to speak. No one wishing to speak on this property, okay? Any comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission? The school owns from his business all the way to the Crossroads Commercial? Is that, is that what I'm looking at?
No, sir, there is a, uh, school, and then there is, uh... Excuse me. Yeah, there's a school, and then, uh, Health Quest is a medical facility, a medical...
Brand-new?
Yeah, medical clinic.
Going, going.
And then, uh, Volks Construction is also on the corner behind that.
And then, on the absolute corner is Oak Grove Baptist Church.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And across from that is a, a bank and a Jump and Jive, and another couple of new doctors' offices.
And other, other, uh, medical clinics, things like that, yes, sir.
But it's all still RM? But the, now, I was getting ready to ask, those are all non-conforming uses?
Yes, sir. Basically, uh, some of them are conforming, uh, but majority of those, like, uh, the school is conforming. Volks Construction is non-conforming. The, uh, the Health Quest is conforming, uh, they were granted variances to allow them to build the building, but, uh, medical facility is permitted in a RM district.
Unless I'm looking at something different, we'd be looking at spot zoning issue.
Well, yeah.
I wouldn't say it's spot zoning, but...
I'm close enough.
If you got technical, I would say you're right, but it's borderline.
I don't know the borders crossing the road.
Across the street from my property, is that Crossroads Commercial, or is that medium residential?
The way this map is drawn, looks like it's partial.
There's part, part of it is, but part of it is medium intensity residential. There's a strip that runs, that crosses the road. So I...
I mean, the, the Jump and Jive has gotta be a six thousand square foot building, huh? It's, it's a, it's a large building.
That would be a kid complex. With wonderful cars.
That's, that's one that was granted variances, though.
All that's located in a mixed-use.
It's all mixed-use?
Yes, sir. That corner.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. How many, how many actual, how many actual residences are right in that area? Is this area all going? I mean, you're saying it's all non-conforming, I understand that. But are there, you know, are there still residences close by?
There, the only residence that I know of is past where the, the new hospital, or the St. Elizabeth Building's gonna be.
Skeleton?
Which, uh, and, and I don't even, I, I don't even know if they're used as residents anymore. Lance may know, I, but...
It's a skeleton, our instructions, sir, now.
I, I can't see one from my office.
This, this one?
Yep.
And I, I think my building is probably the oldest from, from where the St. Elizabeth Building is being built, all the way to, probably Oak Grove Baptist Church is the next oldest building in, in that, uh, in that vicinity. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Even though the area seems to be moving towards commercial, would it be still spot zoning to...
I can address that. Can we address that?
Yes, please.
Spot zoning is not, is normally not legal. Not all spot zoning is illegal if you can justify it based on some of the factors that you've been talking about tonight. So it would not be an illegal spot zoning if you felt that you could justify it by the fact that everything there is commercial, uh, within the area. In fact, there's some cases now saying, when you have a situation like this, you may have reverse spot zoning if you deny the one person that right. But that's not some, that's not a recommendation, that's just that it, not all spot zoning is, is illegal. It, it can be justified in limited situations. And if those situations, if you feel those situations apply, then you just need to make sure, you specify those situations in your motions of that, and this is only a recommendation to the council.
I'll make a motion, then. Um, I make a motion to approve based on, um, uh, the, the current property in the area is all going commercial. Either it's non-conforming, or there's no residential areas within the area that we approve that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Scott Courtwright.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Sherri Sloman. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item six C, zoning review ID fifteen forty-seven point zero six, lot eleven B of the Winifred Causey Estates or Design Contractors.
Ellen Jackson with McLennan Associates, representing the owner of the property. We're asking for rezoning from conservation to rural, which it, this property, um, is adjacent to a subdivision that, the lots are smaller, so we're asking for your approval. The owner is here to, um, go into more details with you.
Uh, yes, I'm Wayne Close with Design Contractors, and, uh, uh, the reason I wanted to speak about it is, um, our objective is not to, uh, have a subdivision with really small lots, something very unique, uh, in the area. All the lots would be at least a half acre or larger, and, um, that's a good transitional area considering the conservation, um, actual area starts almost, uh, almost with the property adjacent to us. So basically, we're asking for, uh, not, not to make a real small, um, you know, lot subdivision, but to have half-acre lots, uh, to transition from, uh, you know, res- residential to the conservation area, which is the one acre.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Lance? Any background on this? I mean, was this zoned this way from, from the beginning, or has rezoning taken place? And if so, I mean, do you have any background on to why the line's right where it is?
No, sir, not really any, any known exactly where the line is, but I know that, uh, the flood zone, uh, map in this area, uh, kind of dictated where the, uh, where the zoning changes were, uh, based on the flood maps and, uh, on that, in that area.
Is this property in the, in the A flood zone?
Yes, sir, yeah.
It's on there.
Yes, in zone A eight.
I believe it's about two and a half foot out in the front and one and a half foot out in the back as a, uh, estimate.
Let's go back to two thousand and two, two thousand and three, when we revised the zoning for the parish. Part of the south side of forty-two, we said what we felt could handle, uh, commercial and medium intensity residential, and that was actually toward the west. As we got closer to the east because of the, and I think, I, I wanna say it was because of the wetlands. Uh, that's, that was the main reason. We cut off and made it conservation, because we didn't feel that the, the, it could sustain the, uh, the greater densities.
Yes, sir, that's correct. It was the flood zones, and, uh, where it was is that, yes, it was commercial, really, and medium intensity all the way down forty-two. And, uh, basically, we felt that, and the council and the commission felt that they should stop, and right now, it does pretty much, the commercial stops pretty much at forty-four, uh, a little bit further east, and then it's medium intensity, and then it stops basically at this point, and then transition into that next one because of the flood zone, yes, sir, because of, based on that.
Okay. May I make a comment, sir? Um, the, uh, there is a parish road that turns from forty-two right there, uh, and, um, one of the things that, one of our objectives was to, uh, give easement to, of sixty-foot to improve that road and improve that road. And I know that's not a bearing on this, but one thing I do want to say is that that line where the, you know, where the conservation starts is like right there, almost adjacent to the property. So noted. Any other comments or questions for commissioners? Then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Now be your chance to do it. No one wishing to speak? Comments, questions from commissioners?
Yes, Scott, I do turn the stopwatch on, y'all, when I ask, "Where's the wish of the commission?"
Where's my next one?
O'Neill said I could.
Yep.
See?
We're gonna move on, and it's gonna be automatically...
We felt, what was it, O'Neill, two minutes we felt was fair enough?
Two minutes.
Well? You made it to a minute last time.
I broke the silence, guys.
Shit, no, Sherri broke the silence last one.
She did.
At a minute. Just hit a minute.
I'm gonna break the silence. Based on the fact, just staying in conformance with original zoning intent and, and keeping with the original intent of what was put in, into effect, when zoning went into effect, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we, uh, deny.
I have a motion to deny by Mike Bardwell.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six D zoning review ID fifteen forty-eight point zero six for Louisiana Gifts and Gallery.
How are y'all doing this evening? I'm Ed Martin. I represent Cypress Point Industrial Park. And if I can use your great technology here, I'd like to take you on a virtual tour of the place if I can figure this out. There we go. Uh, this is the view when you enter the property that we're talking about. On the right is actually adjoining property. If you can't make this out, this is trailer parks. Excuse me, not trailer park. These are trailers. Another industrial building here, I don't know, it's about four thou, about six thousand square feet, wire rope, if you're familiar with it. And that also have a Cypress wood facility or something over here. This is the property in question. As the road comes in and turns around, the next thing you'd see, you make this little curve, is this building. The sign, if you advance down the road, you will turn and you'll hit, I'm sorry, moving this all over. You'll hit, this is the interstate that boards the other side of my property. This is a view, once you get down to this corner, we were just looking at where you see the interstate a little larger and the other buildings that come down it. And this is from the back end of the property where you see just the sign that you started at and you come down the whole way down the road. It's been an industrial park since nineteen eighty when ground was broken. Uh, it was an industrial park in nineteen ninety-three when I purchased it. It was an industrial park when it was owned in, what was it, nineteen ninety-seven or whatever, ninety-nine, whenever y'all zoned it. I've kind of been waiting for this, which appears to me to be a very obvious oversight or error to be corrected. And apparently hasn't. Uh, I'm, I'm further perplexed by, if you look at the zoning map, this is the interstate, highway seventy-three. This is all the property that surrounds my property. I'm this little blue dot right here, sandwiched in between all this commercial property and the interstate. And I, I don't know if anybody looked at these pictures and thought they saw a nice Acadian-style home or someplace they'd like to put a house, but I can't see much use of this as residential. So I'm asking you to correct this oversight and zone this, but it is an industrial park, which I'm just looking for mixed usage. I have no desire to put anything in there. It's gonna be a production facility and have effluents and streams or any kind of manufacturing. We just have very light industrial storage and, uh, manufacturing. Let's like keep it going.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? There are no comments or questions from commissioners. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Please come up and sign in. You'll have your opportunity to speak. No one wishing to speak on this property? Last time, comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Paige Becknell to approve.
I second it.
Seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I would just like some reasons why.
There's already some, um, commercial properties there off the interstate in that area. Is that what you needed to know?
Yes.
I'll, I'll state one too, and the fact that it's, you know, it's got a natural boundary there, the interstate. You're not going any further than that.
Any discussion or opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you. I would have one other item I'd like to ask you. I feel this was an oversight that was on no part of my own and it's cost me seven hundred dollars to get this corrected. I don't know what's the proper channels, but I'd like to put in a bid to have that money returned to me if possible. And thank you.
Thank you. Item six Z zoning review ID fifteen forty-nine point zero six for Dave Miller.
Good evening. My name is Dave Miller. This is Joseph Alonso. The gentleman coming behind me is Booker Sharper. We are co-owners of twenty acres on highway seventy-three in Geismar. Currently, we are zoned as conservation and we asking that you rezonate to residential medium intensity.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Lance, can you tell us what surrounds that, uh, piece of land? Residential. There is a subdivision, River Oaks Road, as you can see, that has been a subdivision that was given approval probably in the early eighties. Uh, there's a post office on the corner of River Oaks Road and highway seventy-three. And across the street, that is zoned a business park. And there are some businesses, uh, across the street. But it's residential and I'm, and next door is residential also. It's just a large lot. It looks like it's a, a mirror of his, of Mr. Miller's property.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Please come up, sign in, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak on this item? Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Uh, based on the surrounding area all being conservation or business park, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny by Steve Barrow. I have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six F zoning review ID fifteen fifty point zero six, lot one dash F dash one dash B for Carrie Holton.
Hello, my name is Carrie Holton. I'm owner of the land. I would like to get it rezoned. I have a, a business in New Orleans that manufactures precision optics, which they need a building and they're willing to sign a lease with me now. If you notice on the diagram that I gave you, north of me is undeveloped land, east of me is undeveloped land. West of me is my father and my brother. And south of me is, uh, some dirt pits. So there's no one real close to me. Also, in going down to look at this business and concerns for the people that live down the road from me, um, this is a very low-traffic business, no through-the-front-door business. It's mostly just precision, small contracts, um, traffic, not a lot of traffic, just a few UPS deliveries a month. Where they're currently located in New Orleans, there's people living around them and a few businesses. I got them to run their machines, which are mainly consist of some lays and a few grinding machines. And they don't make a whole lot of noise, so I can't imagine that it would bother anybody. What I want to do is put up a building that's about, you know, two thousand, twenty-four hundred square foot. Like a, similar to a shop that you would have by your house, just a metal building to house their lens, uh, equipment. And, you know, not that this makes any difference, but it makes a big difference to me. Been living in Ascension Parish for all of my life and I'm handicapped and I'm disabled. So this decision means a lot to me, it's income. So that's all I have to, to tell you. Anybody have any questions?
Comments or questions from commissioners at this time? There's no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Please do so at this time. No one wishing to speak on this property? Any comments or questions from commissioners? O'Neill?
Yes, sir.
Think I'd be safe in saying this is not an example of good spot zoning?
No, this is not.
Alright.
I hate to say that either because you're, you're talking about a zoning to mixed use in a purely rural area.
Well, we, we talked about the chances of some, you know, some good spot zoning.
Possibly, not, or legal, not good, but legal.
Well, legal spot zoning, so.
Well, what would, if I, if you don't mind me asking, what would be a good type of spot zoning?
And when it came up before, when it was all businesses around the place that was just happened to be not zoned for business, where indeed you have it all rural, your zone rural.
I under, I understand.
There are no other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Based on the property being surrounded by rural, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
I have a motion by Steve Barrow to deny.
Second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item seven, public hearing, consider off-road street parking standards, zoning review ID fourteen thirty-eight point zero six for Harry Rober.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Newchurch. Peter and I, on behalf of Lowe's Home Centers in regards to trying to solicit this parking variance from you folks here this evening. Essentially, I, I, I think probably what, what our request boils down to is looking at, at two different numbers, so to speak. The first number, um, is a, is a number of around a hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot, which represents the gross floor area of this Lowe's development. The code currently reads of five, excuse me, five spaces per thousand square foot of parking are required. I guess in some instances, really quite honestly, you know, that, that, that code may be somewhat antiquated, so to speak. In this development, that puts us around eight hundred and fifty-six spaces, which is in, in the, in line with Walmart Supercenter, things of that nature, quite, quite a bit of space, spaces, excuse me. Lowe's, I guess, through their national exposure, through their national experience, has a little bit different way of looking at it. They're, they more focus on the air-conditioned space of the building, which is around a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot, uh, which is where the customers are kind of gonna be utilizing that space. Their, their requirement for this particular project is, is a five-point-one space per thousand, um, setup, again, using a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot. I guess if we can look at that presentation, it would probably help to see this visually. Okay. I guess to back up a little bit, I, I know in your package, you probably have all the, the project information, but essentially, the project's located off of Airline Highway, uh, between Airline Highway and highway forty-four. There is gonna be an access road, uh, connecting those two, signalized on both sides, uh, with the overlying intent of, of creating a new, nice commercial corridor, power center, so to speak, um, again anchored by those two, by those two signals on each side. Kind of talk about some of the numbers here. It's really the building information, which is again, based on, based on the building you have there in your packet. The main building proper, uh, is a hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and forty thousand square foot. The way, the way we're looking at it, I guess, this evening, is to take away this third-line item here, this receiving and storage area, which as you can see on the site plan, is a little area kind of recessed off the back of the store, which is really just fenced in for, um, additional appliances, uh, lawnmowers being serviced and those kind of things. Again, not, not customer areas. And if you add on, excuse me, add on that number and you add on the garden center number, which is around thirty thousand square foot, that brings me to a hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot number I talked about earlier. And again, to kind of revisit the, the, the numbers I mentioned right when we started, the code requirement dictates, uh, five spaces per thousand square foot of gross floor area. Again, that's the hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot number. As I mentioned, it's eight hundred and fifty-six spaces, which is, uh, which again, is, is very substantial. What we're proposing is six hundred and forty-two, so to, total spaces, or a five-point-one space requirement per thousand foot of air-conditioned area. Again, looking at the numbers a little bit differently, um, which is, which equates to a twenty-five percent reduction. I think that the best way to look at this is, is to see it graphically. Essentially, this is, this is what you folks have in front of you here tonight. It's just a cleaned-up version of that site plan you have there. And basically, what it represents is the Lowe's store and the, the, I guess in gray or, or tan, the color shown there, I guess, is what Lowe's typically evaluates their parking requirement to be based on. Um, again, typical with a big, uh, home improvement or supercenter or anybody, they like, the, the front parking field is very important to them. You know, this is, this is, their standard parking is around a four-point-five, so what we're doing here is just finding a little bit more, kind of trying to keep with the intent of the, of the ordinance. However, if we look at what would happen if we truly kept with the intent of the ordinance is, if you look here to the side, and I don't know if you can read the number, but it's around, uh, two acres, just shy of two acres of additional paved area that would have to be added to the site, uh, to, in order to facilitate the, the code requirement for this size store. I guess that's, that's, that's problematic for several reasons, I guess. First, um, you know, intuitively, and I guess we've done enough of these to really recognize the fact that, that the client and the customer rarely use the, the spaces on the side of the store. So essentially, what we would be doing is, is paving and, and developing and, uh, you know, adding to this, just adding more mass to this site than needs to be for, for spaces that, quite candidly, would probably seldom be, be used. Secondly, I think, again, I mentioned, uh, kind of the commercial corridor look for this thing. The property here on the side, um, is not gonna be, is not gonna be acquired by Lowe's, where that yellow area is kind of being shown now. The intent again is for that to become, um, something else along the commercial lines and keeping with, with a national tenant such as Lowe's. As well as all the properties located across the proposed access roads, which would back up to Bayou Narcisse. So, again, you're driving down the new access road off of Airline Highway, and you have, uh, you know, uh, tenant X right there, right next door to the Lowe's, and then on the right-hand side, you have, you know, whether there be restaurants, commercial use, or anything else like that. What, I guess what the, um, with your help tonight, we'll be able to move forward with, with this site plan and have a, have a much easier palette to paint on, and to be able to move forward with the rest of the development. And again, you know, really to kinda put some of the numbers in perspective, you know, that probably, we've listed a lot of other things here, a lot of ratios, a lot of code things from other, uh, Urban Land Institute and National Institute of Transportation here, and things like that. But I think probably the biggest point that we'd like to get across is that, um, you know, Lowe's is, Lowe's is in business to be in business. And obviously, they're not gonna provide a, a situation that's uncomfortable and difficult for their customers to be able to get in and out of the store from, or be able to have to drive around for ten, twenty minutes to find a space in their front parking field. So, the number, I guess, we're proposing, again, being a little bit higher than those, Lowe's national standard, we believe is gonna be more than sufficient and adequate to services site. Again, their, you know, their standards are that for a reason, I think they're around twelve hundred stores now, so, um, they got it pretty wiretied, so to speak. And again, some of the other things I mentioned, I guess, here in the bullet points, uh, site aesthetics, you know, again, I mentioned the, you know, really additional two acres of pavement on the side that, that, um, in all actuality, is probably not really needed, it just kinda adds to, or takes away from, I guess, rather than, uh, what else can be done on that site? Not to mention, you have, you have a, a large facility there, just surrounded by a sea of pavement. And then again, I mentioned some of these documented precedents you can see from the, from the National Transportation, excuse me, National Institute of Transportation Engineers, Urban Land Institute, um, International Committee of Shopping Centers, they all hover around four-point-oh per thousand. So, we're still getting a little bit more cushion beyond that, um, again, trying to keep with the intent of, of what you guys have in the ordinance. If, and that's, that's for a site layout, I guess, if we look at this thing specifically as a snapshot in time of how many spaces you can expect to be used during the course of any given day, it's kinda described here in the next bullet. You know, one-point-three-five vehicles per thousand for a weekday peak between one and two o'clock in the afternoon, uh, which is not really substantial. I guess everybody's doing all their home improvement stuff on the weekend, obviously. So, if you look at the weekend number, it's, it's doubled, which makes sense, um, for the weekend use, again, for the weekend peak. So, you know, we're still at around two-seven-five or three, and you have up to four, four-point-five or five spaces per thousand to accommodate for those, um, you know, spring flowerbed redos and, and Christmas and everything else, all the times that things are really where the, where the, where the center's really gonna get pressed. So, um, there is some cushion, I guess, in there as well. And again, you know, the two last things, really, I talked about the increased ability to develop the residual property, which I think, uh, falls out very well for the, for the parish to be able to use this whole thing in lieu of, uh, in lieu of, again, just this, this sea of pavement, so to speak, and, and kinda this one user here on the north side of this access road. And then, um, you know, I think which is kind of important, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a tertiary item, but earlier store opening, I mean, that's, we're talking about, um, you know, as I mentioned, two acres of pavement, which on this site is, um, there with me, probably ten percent to fifteen percent more, uh, site work. So, I mean, there, there are some cost factors involved there too, but certainly, uh, certainly the increase, or decrease time in getting that, you know, getting that store open, I think is probably important to everyone. And that's really it, any questions, please, please feel free to ask. And we've been here a while, so I tried to run through that kinda quick, so I probably missed four or five things.
We do appreciate it.
Well, and look, I didn't want you to get scared when I saw the presentation either, I wanted to, I wanted to caution that it was, that it was brief, so.
If the commission goes ahead and does approve to twenty-five percent reduction, I'm just kinda curious, when would you, you're talking about earlier store opening, when would you look at?
We are actually, uh, we made our plat, we made our platte middle today. So, I sat in through the first meeting and, and took very good notes as to what we need to have accomplished by the time Mr. Saunti writes his letter. So, we get that done, um, I believe they have a out-to-bid date scheduled for mid-September, which, yeah, mid-September, so it would, you know, a month beyond that, they would hope to get started. And again, this is kinda why we're doing this, uh, ahead of time before the plat, to make sure that the boundary lines are gonna remain where they are based on kinda the configuration we have set up now, so, with your approval, we'll be able to do that and move forward.
Comments, questions, and commissioners?
Lance? Um, has, has any traffic studies been done yet? For the site plan review?
No, sir, I know that, uh, just like Mr. Newchurch stated earlier, he, uh, gave some information this, today to Charles for approval, so maybe, or for a submittal, and you might wanna, you may ask him, Mr. Newchurch, and see.
Any, 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 uh, traffic studies been done?
Yes, sir, we submitted one today, actually, we are on our third iteration, I believe, through comments from, uh, the highway department, and we submitted that third iteration.
Would anything change based on the number of parking spaces that you had in that traffic study?
In terms of the site?
Overall, I'm looking at the two things, you know, stacking ability on forty-four and Airline because of a reduction? I mean, I'm just trying to understand how the, how the traffic study works into this. Right, exactly.
Well, I guess there's, there's a couple of ways, I guess, the, the, typically, I guess, the, the, the traffic study will not address internal geometry. However, it will address kinda the allocation of individual, um, vehicle loads in each individual driveway. See, for example, um, we can barely clearly determine how many cars are gonna be making a right-hand turn off of the access road into that middle driveway, they're right above the C in access. And those things are very clearly shown on the, on, and, and typically, I guess, what, what we try to do, as you can see here, the kinda the, the multiple, multiple driveways in, is the space folks out, I mean, it's, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's human nature to try to get in the first one, obviously, but then if you recognize that as a bottleneck, most folks go on down to the next one.
Let me make sure I understood what you said earlier, by national standards, in terms of where, throughout the country, when you put the Lowe's stores in, these parking requirements exceed, even with the twenty-five percent reduction?
That's correct, I think, uh, and it's, and it's, and each municipality looks at it differently. Lowe's typical standard is, I think for this particular store is six hundred and eight spaces. Somewhere in there, six-eight, six-ten, um, somewhere in there, but I know, I know we're more than, I know we're twenty to thirty more than what their national standard is for this particular store. And actually, in some municipalities, like, um, your, your counterparts in the planning commission in New Orleans, they're actually limiting the parking spaces the other way. That you can't exceed, uh, a four-point-oh, for them, it's a three-point-three, so, it's, and we're seeing that a lot in, in some, like in Austin, Texas, a little more, you know, kinda these greener spaces, they want that.
I'd have to watch that because of stacking, I mean, you wouldn't wanna get your highways to where they were stacking because you didn't have enough parking.
Cause you're, cause you're, cause you don't let people park in this circle in the driveway, so.
Lance, do you have any other comments?
Their concern in Austin and other greener areas is for heat island effect.
That's exactly right.
Less wasted paved area, less impacted drainage because of percolation and so forth.
And in my haste and hurry through the presentation, I didn't get to mention that, so that was why.
I was with you. I was.
You saw it, you're good.
Well, we do, if there's no other questions or comments from the commissioners, we do have to open this up for public hearing.
You put clack on it.
Yeah, and anyone wishing to speak on this item, come up, sign in, and you get your three minutes. And of course, we've got the packed house, no one wishing to speak on this item? Comments, questions, and commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve based upon our discretion to reduce the parking, uh, standards by twenty-five percent and, uh, the case presented by the gentleman here.
I have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow. Seconded by Scott Courtwright, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thanks for your patience.
Item eight, new business, any items of new business? Item nine, old business, which we have one item of old business. That is... We have a definition for B and B. Has everybody had a chance to review it? Thoughts, comments? Satisfied? Not satisfied?
I guess I'd have to ask Scott, because Scott and Paige had the most comments on this ordinance.
Man, I think it's fine.
My only thought is the breakfast is that it doesn't have to be just a continental breakfast, I don't know if that has to be stated, it could be a full breakfast.
Well, it just says breakfast including continental, so it could be.
Gotcha.
Covered.
Covered.
I, sorry. I have been to bed and breakfast in another part of the country where the proprietor did not live on-site.
We had that discussion.
They did have a housekeeper, manager-type person, but the proprietor did not live on-site.
That would be their representative.
Did it say that in there?
Yeah, proprietor or his representative.
I'm sorry.
His or her representative.
You off the hook too.
Well, she's new, she, this is her first night, so we gotta cut her a little slack.
Her, oh, it was late.
I think it looks good, I'm ready.
Um...
Be a public hearing next week.
What, that's why I was getting ready to ask, is, uh...
All this is doing is adding this, and the seventeen dash one thirty-eight is the definitions of the development code, so this is just gonna be, have to be added in, rather than type up the whole new.
Right.
And we just did this one definition.
I'd like to make a motion then to bring this for public hearing at the next meeting.
I have a motion to hold a public he, hearing on this item at next month's zoning commission meeting by Steve Barrow. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item ten, uh... Subcommittee report.
Uh, subcommittee meeting, two weeks from tonight at six P M. Here. P, uh, put, pain department.
Yeah.
Six. Nobody can make it for five anymore. Well, hold on, do we need to discuss that?
He has to be there till five.
Yeah, okay. We'll work out all the details. Just worried about having a quorum.
That's your report? Item eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Scott Courtwright.
Second.
Seconded by... Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes, we're adjourned.
Good job, good job.